Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. And we'll do, I guess, we need a roll call because it looks like Commissioner Hagan is, is Commissioner Hagan appearing virtually? I guess so. So with that, if we could have a roll call, please.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Thank you. And we have a very special morning this morning. We're going to have the presentation of the colors by the Tampa Bay Technical High School Naval JROTC Color Guard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. The ceremony will be led by our chaplain, Commissioner White. Commissioner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For those of us joining us, for those of you joining us virtually, I'll ask that you please stand if you're able to. I'll ask everyone here live to please stand, and I'll hand it over to Lieutenant Colonel Scott Weiss, JROTC instructor from Tampa Bay Tech for the presentation of colors. And at this time, I'll ask that you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I'd like to ask you to join me in the invocation.
Forward.
Heavenly Father, I, Heavenly Father, I thank you for these young leaders that are here with us today and that you will bless them and guide them not only today but into the future. Father, I pray that you as the great healer will usher out this COVID pandemic so that we can put this behind us. I pray for healing for all of the families that have been impacted by this pandemic, particularly for families of our own here in Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County employees, including firefighter Chiantio, who was recently lost in the line of duty. Father, I do pray that you will offer blessings to our first responders, members of our armed forces, that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen. And Madam Chair, before the colors are retired, I would like to take a point of personal privilege this morning and take a moment to highlight a loss that is significant to Hillsborough County. One of our active-duty Hillsborough County firefighters, Giovanni Chiantio, has fallen in the line of duty due to complications from COVID-19. Not since 2013 have we lost an active-duty firefighter, and I wanted to ensure that we, the Board, recognize his sacrifice as he is being laid to rest this morning. My thoughts and prayers are with his family on this day as we honor his service to Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. some of the recipients will be joining the meeting virtually. You're going to, okay. I'm just so unused to having it be in present. I'll take a moment of personal privilege if I could, recognizing that firefighter is that this weekend also a judge in Hillsborough County left us, Judge Deborah Binkie, and she was a really remarkable judge, and I interned or was a clerk for her, whatever it is, and will miss her greatly.
Okay, Madam Chair, if we're on the first proclamation?
We are, Commissioner White.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. And at this time, I would like to ask the following individuals to join me at the podium. Colonel Samuel Taylor, JROTC District Resource Teacher and Director of Army Instruction for Hillsborough County Public Schools. Good morning, Colonel. It's great to see you again.
You as well.
From Steinbrenner High School, Cadet Captain Samuel Knight; Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Zoe Spanos; and ROTC Instructor Sergeant First Class Stephen Nato, welcome. From Plant High School, Cadet Major Zoe Deliri; and Cadet First Lieutenant Angelo Talmage, welcome. And from Tampa Bay Tech High School, Cadet Lieutenant Junior Grade Nelson Launa, Luna; Cadet Commander Insaf Morrison; Cadet Ensign Antonio Perez; Cadet Lieutenant Commander Isul Rivera Roman; and Lieutenant Colonel Weiss. And thank you for that wonderful presentation of colors this morning. That was well done. And good morning to all of you again. The Board welcomes you to this presentation. Every year, more than 5,000 students in Hillsborough County Public Schools participate in the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. This national program builds character, discipline, and teamwork, develops future leaders, and helps participants lead productive lives. Each year, the top 10 cadets in Hillsborough County JROTC are identified through a comprehensive process that requires an essay, a rigorous academic record, exemplary community service, letters of recommendation, and a selection board. One was honored as the Hillsborough County Cadet of the Year. Today, the Board recognizes this outstanding program and those remarkable top 10 cadets. They are Cadet Major Jade Russe from Alonzo High School; Cadet First Lieutenant Natalie E. Gonzalez from Chamberlain High School; Cadet Commander Silvana Calderone from Gaither High School; Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Gladys Pellygren from Jefferson High School; Cadet Major Zoe Deliri from Plant High School; Cadet Lieutenant Colonel, yes, excuse me, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Maxwell Mondo from Sickles High School; Cadet Lieutenant Commander Karina Wooding from Spoto High School; Cadet Major Zoe A. Spanos from Steinbrenner High School; Cadet Lieutenant Commander Insaf Morrison from Tampa Bay Tech High School; and Cadet Major Andrew Fisher from Newsome High School, who was selected as Hillsborough County Cadet of the Year. I am proud to present the following proclamation declaring November as JROTC Month in Hillsborough County. But before we do that, let me just go off script for a moment and just ask for a round of applause for these wonderful students here today that are being recognized. Well done and well deserved. So at this time, I will read the proclamation into the record. It reads, "Whereas, established by Congress in 1916, the Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps is sponsored by the United States Armed Forces and based in schools across the nation and on U.S. military bases around the world. And whereas, commonly referred to as JROTC, the program represents the Army, Navy, Air Force, and Marine Corps. And whereas, with a mission of motivating young people to be better citizens, the program prepares cadets to lead positive, productive, and rewarding lives by teaching personal responsibility, enhancing leadership skills, and enabling them to learn the value of teamwork. And whereas, every year, more than 5,000 students in Hillsborough County Public Schools participate in JROTC programs offered in 28 high schools throughout the county. And whereas, these programs receive strong support from the Hillsborough County School District, elected officials, and civic, business, and military organizations, encouragement that is essential to their continued success. And whereas, the top 10 cadets in Hillsborough County JROTC are identified each year through a comprehensive process that requires an essay entitled, 'How JROTC is Preparing Me to Achieve My Goals in Life: A Rigorous Academic Record, Exemplary Community Service, Letters of Recommendation, and a Selection Board,' and one is honored as Hillsborough County Cadet of the Year. And whereas, Hillsborough County salutes the JROTC programs of Alonzo High School, Chamberlain High School, Gaither High School, Jefferson High School, Newsome High School, Plant High School, Sickles High School, Spoto High School, Steinbrenner High School, and Tampa Bay Technical High School, all of which achieved a top 10 cadet in the 2020, 2021 academic year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 2021 as JROTC Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to support the JROTC programs in Hillsborough County as they continue developing future leaders and shaping productive lives." Executed this third day of November 2021, signed by all seven of the Commissioners and Colonel Taylor, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. We have copies for each school as well, and I'd like to invite you to say a few words at this time. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we greatly appreciate the Board of Commissioners doing this each year. I have the privilege of working and coordinating with all 28 of the JROTC programs, and I can't begin to tell you how proud that makes me feel, and I can't begin to tell you how good they are. They're absolutely everything you want young people to be. They're absolutely everything you want to ensure the future of America remains as strong as it can possibly be. So thank you for acknowledging them, for honoring them, and for telling them that what they do and who they are is important.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Colonel Taylor, again, thank you for those words and for those encouraging words. It's great to know that the future is in the hands of these wonderful young people here behind me. As I mentioned, each top 10 cadet is going to get a personalized copy of the proclamation for their school. And now, we will do some photos. I believe we're going to do a group shot with the entire Board first, and then we'll take individual group photos with each school that was represented today. So I will look for prompts from the photographer.
Let me have the three top 10 cadets from last year. I want you on either side of Commissioner White, and then the rest of us to fill the background. But these three were actual top 10 cadets last year.
Wonderful. Welcome. You probably want us to back up, right? You tell us.
If you could, that would be fantastic. Thank you, sir. All right. One of you, Pope, the part of the... And that works right there. If you position yourself.
Can you come over to the Board to be in the background of the photo if you will permit yourself?
All right, thank you. One, two, three. I'll take several.
I haven't done it in a while.
Yeah. I've done it since the first.
And we're going to do some individual schools?
Yes.
And I'd like to do one with the last year's recipients.
Okay, so let's have everybody exit except for the top three there for the first photo.
One, two, three.
You guys comfortable shaking hands?
Yes, sir.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
All right, Insaf, you stay up there. Everyone else on that Tampa Bay Tech with Colonel Weiss, please.
All right. One, two, three. Everybody comfortable shaking hands?
Once again.
All right, once again. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations. Yes, sir. One, two, three. Thank you for being here. Yeah. You've been here so much.
Actually, I didn't watch it.
I remember.
Thank you for being here. Yeah. You've been here so much.
Actually, I didn't watch it.
I remember.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you so much for having me.
Commissioner White, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for the time. I think we're going to have a cadet of the year. We're going to be invited again.
And I'll be there. Absolutely. Madam Chair, if I can, this may have one more point of personal privilege. Thank you again for coming out today. This is the first live proclamation that we've done like this in almost two years because of the pandemic, and I felt like I was shaken off the rust a little bit, so thanks for dealing with that. But thanks so much for coming out, and what a great way to kick off sort of a return to normalcy, right? So thank you for being here.
And our next recognition will be presented by Commissioner Overman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not logged into the video, so I want to follow up with checking on whether or not Thomas Mans, the President and CEO of the Feeding Tampa Bay, and Antoinette Hayes Triplet, CEO of Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative. Are they with us today?
Yes, I'm here.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for joining us today. I appreciate that. Food insecurity and homelessness has been an ongoing problem in our region. According to the 2021 Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Point in Time Count, nearly 900 people are living on the streets. Over 100 of them are military veterans. Last year, according to Feeding Tampa America's Map the Meal Gap interactive study, nearly 170,000 people in Hillsborough County. More than 12% of our residents were considered food insecure before the pandemic. Hillsborough County, its staff, and community partners are and always will be dedicated to fighting food insecurity and homelessness in our community. Feeding Tampa Bay and the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative are instrumental in assuring that every person is fed and has a safe place to call home. I am honored to present this proclamation to Mr. Mans and Ms. Hayes Triplet for recognizing them for their amazing work. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. It reads, "Whereas hunger and homelessness are widespread problems that impact countless rural and urban communities throughout the world. And whereas, in the United States, over 43 million Americans live below the poverty level. 549,000 Americans are homeless on a typical night. And 42 million Americans are at risk of suffering from hunger. And whereas, over 25 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas, Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week educates the public, drawing attention to the problem of poverty, and builds up the base of volunteers and supporters for local anti-poverty agencies. And whereas, Hillsborough County has partnered with the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative and Feeding Tampa Bay to combat hunger and homelessness through their proactive initiatives and programs. And whereas, Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative has been instrumental in providing housing and services for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. And whereas, Feeding Tampa Bay is committed to decreasing food insecurity by providing household groceries and prepared meals, production support of food preparation and delivery through the Furlough Hire Program, and permanent and portable cooled storage support units for perishables. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissions of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 13th through November 21st as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to support the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative and Feeding Tampa Bay in raising awareness on how to fight hunger and homelessness in the community. Executed this third day of November 2021 and signed by all seven Commissioners. I really truly appreciate the passion behind all of these efforts, and I'd like to invite Mr. Mans to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the recognition of the work of the community. We're proud to be here, and we're proud to make sure those among us who may need a healthy meal at the table or friendly face to serve them, that we're here to do, and we're grateful for the opportunity and appreciate, particularly over the last 20 months, the partnership with the county. I think I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Ms. Weiss, Mr. Harness, and Ms. Crosby Rucker, who have been indispensable and wonderful partners in helping us make sure that we see to the needs of our community who has asked us to step up and step into some difficult times. So thank you very much for the honor. We'll proudly display it at our facility, and again, we appreciate the Commission's recognition and the partnership with the county.
Thank you for all your efforts and the partnership you have with many, many nonprofits in the area for helping distribute food. And with that, we also have Ms. Hayes Triplet available to us, who's been a great partner in helping us not only find places for people to sleep, but also in partnering with the Affordable Housing Advisory Board's efforts to make sure that we're creating more transition for those that are homeless to home secure. Ms. Hayes Triplet, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of THHI's Board of Director and the many partners that work together to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring in our community, I would like to thank the Commissioners for this proclamation and the countless partnerships with several departments throughout Hillsborough County. As we recognize Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, it is imperative that we remain mindful that although our community is experiencing tremendous growth and transition, there are nearly 1,500 people that are experiencing homelessness on any given night in our community. At this time, we have funding to provide housing for those experiencing homelessness. However, there are not enough affordable housing in our community. THHI and its partnering agencies are providing financial incentives to landlords that will provide housing for persons emerging from homelessness. The solution to homelessness is homes. So I want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Howell, Ms. Crosby Rucker, and Mr. Early for all of their work day in and day out to make sure that THHI and our partnering agencies can deliver on the services and the housing needed in our community. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for all your work and their partnership, because without you, I'm sure we would have even a bigger crisis than we have. And right now, we've got a situation where rents are increasing to such a level that many people are actually facing homelessness due to having their rent increased and inability to be able to afford the rents in our community, given that Tampa Hillsborough area is one of the highest increase in rents in the country. So this problem is urgent and dire, and your partnership in this has been incredibly important to our ability to help people stay with a roof over their head and have meals in their bellies. So thank you so very much for being here today. Chair.
Thank you. And with that, I'll present the last proclamation, and I see Mr. Roy Swetman is here, President of Southern Manufacturing Technologies, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. This proclamation, we present every year for Manufacturing Month, an event celebrated across the nation. Thousands of manufacturers across the country host open houses and presentations that feature state-of-the-art manufacturing technology and career opportunities for job seekers. And although we are recognizing this occasion retroactively, we just passed that month, it's an honor to present this proclamation as Mr. Swetman today, to Mr. Swetman today as Hillsborough County celebrates Manufacturing Month and Florida Manufacturing Day, recognizing our state's manufacturing industry. And it reads, "Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of the economy in the United States and Florida, and October is Florida Manufacturing Month, with October 1st as Florida Manufacturing Day, all highlighting the importance of manufacturing and draws attention to the many rewarding, high-skill manufacturing jobs. And whereas these occasions show support for and celebrate Florida's manufacturers and school programs that prepare the future workforce. And whereas the following organizations strongly support manufacturing and manufacturing careers," and there's a long list here, "the Association for Operations Management, Bay Area Manufacturers Association, Florida Suncoast Manufacturers Association, Florida Advanced Technological Education Center for Excellence, Florida Defense Contractors Association, Hillsborough Community College, Hillsborough County Public Schools and Technical Education, National Tooling and Machining Association, Society of Manufacturing Engineers, the University of South Florida College of Engineering, and the Manufacturing Alliance of Hillsborough County. And whereas Manufacturing Day virtual tours are conducted to strengthen the technical and academic skills of young adults enrolled in manufacturing, engineering, and design courses of study, and whereas manufacturing provides jobs for approximately 50,000 Hillsborough County residents, and manufacturing facilities in the county make products as diverse as components used in home building, aircraft, aerospace, defense, and medical industries. Therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County does hereby declare October 1st, or did, Manufacturing Day, October is Manufacturing Month, and urges all residents to recognize the value of manufacturers and their important role in the county and the national economy. And this was executed this week and signed by all seven Commissioners. Mr. Swetman, would you like to say a few words? You're muted.
I think it's unmuted now.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to thank all of the Commissioners for the recognition of the importance of manufacturing to the local economy and for the highly skilled and highly paid careers that we offer.
highly paid careers that we offer. And I'd also like to thank the Commissioners for their ongoing support for manufacturing, especially for the manufacturing-related training that has been put in place in the school systems. So, my company, SMT, is manufacturing Hillsborough County. We make parts for aircraft, aerospace, and defense, and including, you know, there's parts on 737s that all of yous probably have flown on. Last year, you know, we make a part for a ventilator, which was a hot item last year during the worst of the pandemic, and we even have some parts on Mars, all made in Hillsborough County. So, while I'm accepting the proclamation, it's really as a representative of all the various manufacturing organizations that you listed on the proclamation, as well as the, all the educational partners that were also listed on there. So, I'd like to invite all of the Commissioners to come and tour SMT sometime and see what kind of high-tech manufacturing we're doing in Hillsborough County, and thank you all again for the proclamation and the recognition.
Thank you, thank you so much. And with that, we will want to thank all of our recipients for joining us today and for everything everyone does to make Hillsborough County one of the greatest counties in the nation. So, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move to changes to the agenda. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We have one item that has been added by Commissioner Overman for consideration pursuant to Rule 13, Rules of Order. This is Item F1. This is to direct staff to bring back to the B.O.C.C. a report to a future board meeting updating the B.O.C.C. on the repercussions and possible action plans to the recent news of Eckerd Connect's pending resignation to no longer provide foster care and childcare services to the children of Hillsborough County. We have one item that has been deferred to November 17th. This is Item A45D, which are the minutes for the Workshop for Transportation that was held on September 23rd, 2021. At 10 o'clock, Item D1 is to hold a public hearing to receive public input and discuss initiating a new Phase IV of the Community Investment Tax and approval of the roadway repave, sorry, roadway pavement preservation program as a project to be eligible for funding. At 10:15, Item B2 is to approve the following projects to be funded by the American Rescue Plan, coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funds, this is stormwater drainage and water quality improvements, fire rescue station alerting system, food and security vendor contracts, university area sewer and water connection program, septic-to-sewer conversion Phase I, Youngstown Apartments acquisition and rehabilitation for affordable housing, and to approve a resolution amending the capital improvement program to add CIP projects. At 10:15, also, Item B1 is to approve an American Rescue Plan Act funding agreement between Hillsborough County and the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative for the acquisition and rehabilitation of a 36-unit multifamily rental property known as Youngstown Apartments to provide opportunities for individuals and households emerging out of homelessness. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. And do we do, Ms. Beck, a motion to waive for approval of Commissioner Overman's item at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, there was an add-on agenda item that would require a waiver of your rules and a supermajority vote.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we do these two separately? We do first the motion to waive and then the second to approve the changes?
That would be fine, yes.
Okay. So, Commissioner Overman, the motion to waive seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, we have to do a roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Move the changes to the agenda?
Okay. Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, to move changes to the agenda, seeing no further discussion, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, and we're on to public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to Board members. However, it is requested at the same time that when you address the Board that comments are not directed against, personally against, a Commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board again may hear public comments at the end of the day, at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment form founded hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open for public sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and options available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. Additionally, in-person speakers will be able to sign on-site at the, via the kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online form, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the form is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, telephone number on the online form. This information's being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comments close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. The boardroom and the multipurpose room are designed for speakers only. Those who come to county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 12 in-person sign-ups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Anyone speaking in the boardroom must wear a mask. The multipurpose room will be available for those residents who signed up to speak after the first 12 people have registered, or for those people who cannot wear a mask due to medical condition. Speakers are asked to leave the boardroom or multipurpose room after sharing their comments with the Board. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed each speaker. And with that, we'll recognize the first speaker who is, has signed up to speak virtually, Is Ms. Bradley online?
Yes, now she's here. Okay, there she is.
This is Ms. Bradley.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you all for allowing me to speak, and special thank you to our Commissioner, Ms. Quinn Myers, for making sure that Parkers Village is on the map and things are happening. And I would like to thank all the Commissioners in advance for approving what's on the table for Parkers Village. I'm a native of Parkers Village, somewhat. I pay taxes into the terrace, because that's where I make my head every night, but my heart and everything that I do is in Parkers Village. I was born in Parkers Village, and my family home is still there, my church home is there, and I have compassion for it. What I've seen over the years, from my 56, 59, wow, 59 years, is complete flooding in the village. When there's a heavy rain, there've been times where that channel of the boats out there are just closing. And we are asking you all to please support the plan that's put forth under the Funding American Rescue Plan, that we get the problem resolved. Band-aiding it is not fixing our problem. We have increased housing amongst us, all around us now, due to 20, I believe, 2020 census, we expanded Parkers Village, expanded, so there's more houses that pour down into us. The infrastructure is not the greatest right now for the village, and it's causing a lot of the disasters that we have. Our ponds, our reserve ponds, they're overflowing, the growth is there, and we're just asking you all to please, 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 take us in consideration when you're voting on the plan, to approve it so that we are no longer faced with standing water on many of the streets, that we're not weeding water, our children not playing in dirty water because they think it's fun, but to improve the drainage there so that the flooding can be seen, and that we can be, we can drive through our neighborhoods, and others can drive through our neighborhoods as we drive through those neighborhoods that are next to us. The other housing developments that are around us that are building up, and possibly causing some of our problems, extra water, drainage there, we're able to drive through their neighborhoods without a problem. But in the village, that's been there 60-plus years strong, one of the historical black neighborhoods, we are not feeling the love. So, we're asking you all to share some love on us, approve the plan that is in place. And again, I think, I think Commissioner Myers, I really think, for reaching out, making it happen for us, and we're asking you to support her, support us. Again, although I don't live in the village, I am on the Board, the Parkers Village, the Council Board, the first vice, and the village is my heart, I'm P.V. proud, and as we said in the village, I'm P.V. for life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers as well who are here in person, and I'll call on the first one, Renee Rivard.
Nice to see you again, Renee Rivard, Cortez, Florida. You have been receiving many emails about unwanted pet rabbits. The handout I gave you is from Sherry Silk, CEO of the Humane Society here in Tampa. Last year, the Humane Society took in 159 unwanted pet rabbits. So far this year, they have taken in 225. They turn away at least three to five a month because they are full. They are the only facility in Hillsborough County that takes in rabbits. Your county shelter only takes in dogs and cats. The only active rabbit rescue in the greater Tampa Bay area is Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue in Pasco County. They have no facility and operate only with fosters. It is extremely difficult to find fosters and forever homes for rabbits. During the month of September, the rescue turned away 66 unwanted pet rabbits because they were overwhelmed with rabbits. Unfortunately, when people are turned away, they dump the unwanted rabbits out into our neighborhoods. Pet rabbits are not native to Florida. They can easily die in temperatures below 50 degrees and above 80 degrees. They also don't know how to find food and shelter. All of Florida is having this problem. Pinellas SPCA took in 246 rabbits last year. Orange County banned retail rabbit sales. So did DeSoto County. Key West banned rabbit, guinea pig, and ferret sales. This is not a new problem. The rescue SDA, Sarasota and Defensive Animals, said that in their 31 years of operation, they rescued over 5,000 rabbits and turned away thousands more. They still care for 70 rabbits, but don't accept, accept them in anymore. SDA said that the only logical, non-lethal, and humane solution is to dry up the supply of pet rabbits. We sent you a list of the retail stores that sell rabbits in Hillsborough County and showed you that, how they ramp up for impulse buys during Easter. We are asking that you please help us before breeders start breeding for their Easter supply. SDA recommends a full retail ban. Sherry Silk from the Humane Society recommends a full retail ban, and Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue does as well. We agree, the logic is that if you can easily break a rabbit's back just by picking it up, then why have the rabbits as pets, and why give them to children as pets? Even the salespeople at pet stores have told me that they don't recommend rabbits for young children. Commissioners, please put this item on a future agenda so we can do something about this issue before Easter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And Betsy Colville?
My name's Dr. Betsy Colville. I'm a veterinarian here in Hillsborough County. Rabbits don't like to get picked up. Who knew? Rabbits don't like to live alone. Who knew? All we know is they are cute and soft, and often the first pet for a child, because who knew that we had no clue? It turns out the salesman has no clue either. Rabbits are higher maintenance than dogs or cats, and vet care is more expensive when you can even find a vet who treats exotics. If the owner was told the needs of a healthy rabbit, they would not adopt. They are the third-most relinquished pet because they didn't know they could live eight to 10 years. They're better off as a pair. They cannot live outside on wire with no protective padding on their feet. They cannot tolerate heat or cold. They cannot sweat. They need to live indoors with room to get adequate exercise. Several cat litters are toxic, so paper or wood is best. Their teeth grow continually. Need safe materials to wear them down, or a vet will be needed. They need to be neutered to be calm, to decrease marking, chewing, biting, and babies. They need to be groomed to prevent hairballs, which they cannot throw up and get G.I. blockages. Rabbit mills are no different than puppy mills. The does live a solitary life in a small wire cage and are bred at every heat with eight to 10 litters a year. The does display stereotypic behavior like pacing, digging, wirebiting, and self-mutilation. They can have up to 12 kits in a litter. The kits are removed as early as four weeks, and 20 to 30% die in transport. The pet stores want them when they're small because they take up less space and they're cuter. It's hard to determine the sex at that age, and at four months, they could already be pregnant. Pet stores, feed stores are the main source for rabbits. They sell them for as low as $20. The staff are not educated. The average cost is $250 for neutering alone. They should be vaccinated. They also get fleas, need nails clipped, and often dental care. Our shelters are not equipped to meet the needs of rabbits, so rescues are overwhelmed. When the rescues are full, people just abandon them outside in the belief they can survive. They fall victim to predators, elements, and starvation. Petco and Petsmart stopped selling rabbits in 2007 and only work with rescues. This creates an informed owner of a pet that can live up to 10 years. Sure, rabbits are cute and soft, but now you know about the abuse of the doe, and the life of a bunny is not often sunny. You can stop the sale of rabbits in Hillsborough County and support our rescues. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and I believe that that concludes our public comments, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I don't see any other names listed, and with that, we will move to our consent agenda. Do we have?
So moved. The consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers, to approve the consent agenda. Can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. And with that, we move just a little bit early to our regular agenda. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Since it is a little bit early before our 10 o'clock public hearing, if we could move to Commissioner Overman's item, Item F1, and to speak about the Eckerd Connect's resignation.
Commissioner Overman?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Many of you may have seen on the news or heard on the, on the radio this morning that Eckerd Connect has not only resigned in Pasco and Pinellas County, but has indicated, according to the press, that they will be resigning from Hillsborough County. Foster care systems are stressed right now with as many as families are stressed, given what's happened in the pandemic, the fallout of, of a lot of issues, the stress, and oftentimes drugs and domestic violence are critical issues in increasing the number of children that are at risk in Hillsborough County. It is critical that we have a good plan to put together to address the fact that we, our primary lead provider of children's services in, in the foster care system has a good transition. And while we don't see that, that that would be effective until next June, finding and putting together a significant plan will be an important part of my priorities as far as Hillsborough County children. So, I am going to ask the, to direct staff to bring back to the Board of County Commission a report at a future meeting, because we do need still to hear from the Secretary on what the plan is. We had some either resignations or leaving yesterday that also is compromising this situation. But, but at a future meeting... But at a future meeting, to the Board of County Commission on the repercussion and possible action plans to the recent news of Eckert-Connect's pending resignation to no longer provide foster care and children's services to the children and families of Hillsborough County. And that's my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Overman. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Myers. And I don't see any further discussion at this time, so can we please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Wise. We're still early.
Still early. So if we could, if we could go to item G1. This is to receive a report on Olympus Pool's potential legislative action. And Lauren Storch will present this item. Adam Gormley is also available for questions, too.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lauren Storch with Government Relations.
Your volume is very, very low.
Is that better?
Not too much better. We need it. Maybe our staff could advise her on what she needs to do.
Lauren, if you go down to the bottom where your mute button is, there's a little down arrow. Click that down arrow for me in your Settings tab. Under Microphone, do you see where it says Input Volume? With your little scroll bar.
Should I click to use internal microphone?
I would switch it, yes.
Better?
No. Do you see where it says under Microphone Input Volume? Or Adjust, Automatically Adjust Volume?
I'm not seeing it.
Okay, so in the Vivek session where it says Mute, there's a little down arrow. Do you see that? Click that for me. And another instance will pop up where you'll see the Settings.
Okay.
Okay, click Settings for me.
Okay.
And do you see Microphone Input Volume? Okay. How far along is that? Can you scroll that any further to the right? All right, how about Automatically Adjust Volume?
It's clicked.
Okay. And in your microphone, on the drop-down menu, where does it say to use? How many options do you have?
I have two. Use System Setting or Internal Microphone.
Try that. Try the one that you're not using right now.
Okay. Is that better?
A little bit. I would get closer to the mic.
Is that better?
It's better. It's still low, but nothing like doing this under pressure.
Lauren, if you can just really speak very, very loudly, and we'll get through it.
Sure. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Lauren Storch with Government Relations. This is the Olympus Pool's report. Describes potential legislative action, and myself and Adam Gormley are available if you have any questions.
Is Adam Gormley present?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Did you have anything to add?
We worked with, sorry, my video. Sorry, not being on video. We're supportive of this language change, think that will enhance our ability to address the actions of state-licensed contractors and remove some of the constraints that are currently in place and the fairly high bar that's currently in place for state-licensed contractors, different than the standards that we have for local licensed contractors currently.
I don't see other board discussion at this time nor questions. So I guess what we could do is, if we have a motion, to accept the report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner White, and I heard several, two seconds, I think. Was that Commissioner Cohen's and Smith? Okay. Okay. And with that, if we could have a roll call. Oh, did you want to speak, Ms. Wise?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Hagan is en route to the funeral, and that's why he's not able to be here right now. And so he was wanting this to be part of our legislative agenda, so either we can talk about it now or at a future meeting. That's what we were just discussing.
I guess we're ready to take a, maybe you could bring it separately. We could get a little more information. So with that, if we could do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that staff bring back an item with this proposed as being added to our legislative agenda. Maybe Commissioner Hagan will be here at that time, and we can be sure that it meets his approval and take a vote on it.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Overman, seeing no further discussion. Can we do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Wise.
Perhaps we could waive the rules to take up items B2 and B1, because it's not quite 10 o'clock for the public hearing that's been advertised.
Move to waive the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to waive the rules by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, seeing no further discussion. Roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
I feel tempted to do the screen voting, since Commissioner Hagan isn't even available virtually. I don't know if that's permissible, but.
I think it's been announced that he is not presently attending, so yes, you could do that.
Okay, because that might just be a bit simpler. And with that, Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is, without taking Tom Fessler's thunder, if I can just give a brief introduction on B2 and then B1. This is the part of the American Rescue Plan. You all adopted a plan, an investment plan, based on the dollars that we have received. We did receive $142.9 million in May. We will receive another half about that time next year as well. When we have received the CARES dollars, we put those monies immediately into the community for recovery and relief. And the American Rescue Plan dollars are really to be used to promote long-term investments to promote community health and stability. And with this, we, when you talked about the plan, you had these guidelines that you have adopted, and we said that we were going to bring back to you various projects for your consideration. And this is one of the steps in that process. You previously allocated $35 million for repaving to make needed improvements throughout the community, and we'll bring back those projects specifically at the next board meeting. But today, we have projects that range from drainage and water quality, environmental concerns, stormwater, affordable housing, public safety. And this is a first step to really make a difference into the most vulnerable parts of our community. And so I want to thank you for your guidance, for your input, and for guiding staff. I want to thank staff. It took a village to get to these projects. And there's been a lot of work, and there'll be a lot of work over the next few years. Remember, this money generally is to be spent by the end of December 2024. We know that getting work done takes some time, especially in this time period, getting labor, getting supplies. And so we want to get going, and staff is ready to get moving on these projects. So I wanted to thank you and to thank staff and to just give that introduction. I probably didn't give Tom Fessler much to talk about, but I wanted to go ahead and thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Fessler.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator.
Can we get the volume up a little? Yes, you might need to get closer.
Is that better, Commissioners?
That's way better. You might move your bolt sign to the other side, too, so that we can see it instead of behind your head that way, but. That did it. Okay. Go ahead.
Morning, Commissioners. Yes, Ms. Wise did probably steal a majority of my comments, but I will cover the item and maybe give a little bit more detail. So we believe this is a really good news item. So as was mentioned, back on September 1st, the Board approved an American Rescue Plan Act investment plan. That plan basically provided for some guiding principles in relation to how the funds would be allocated and expended. In addition to that, it provided a list of options, potential options for funding, you know, certain projects associated with the plan. It was intended for those options to be what they were, options. And thanks for consideration. We fully intended that some of those things probably wouldn't be done. There would probably be additional things that would be added after that point in time. So what we intend to do going forward is to have agenda items like this, we bring back to you a specific list of projects for consideration that we can have you approve, and so that we have full transparency moving forward on how the funds are being expended. Once projects are approved, we do intend to put on the Board's agenda our COVID report, which will report back to the Board on budget to actual expenditures related to each of the projects, and provide for some outcomes and where we are in each of those projects moving forward. So on September 1st also, as it was mentioned, you did approve $35 million for some transportation repaving projects. Mr. Lyons, at the next board meeting, we intend to have him come back and present a potential list of projects for consideration for that $35 million. Also, on September 1st, you approved $10 million for recovery of some staff efforts related to the pandemic. As we went through and expended the CARES Act dollars, we chose to push the majority, almost all of those dollars, out into the community and not reimburse ourselves for staff salaries. But we have had very significant efforts, and we have had definitely some incremental and increased staff costs related to the pandemic, so we thought it was appropriate to recover some of those. With that said, those dollars, and once we recover those, will allow us to have some additional dollars available in the fiscal year 23 budget process that can be expended for some very flexible uses. The item that is coming to you today is asking you to approve a list of six projects. Associated with those projects, we're also asking you to approve a resolution that adds nine projects that are associated with those six project areas into our capital improvement program. And then finally, it asks you to approve a budget of them in appropriating $92.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. As Ms. Wise mentioned, we've already received $142 million in funds. During this fiscal year, we received the remaining $142 million plus funds that will make up to $286 million in American Rescue Act funds that will be received by the county. The projects that are in front of you today, we have, that we're asking you to approve are stormwater drainage and water quality improvement projects, $17.5 million. There was a public speaker earlier who mentioned Progress Village. Approximately $10 million of the $17 million will be for projects in the Progress Village area, with the remaining projects being spread across the county. The second item would be for a fire rescue station alerting system, $3.6 million. That will actually provide for some of the latest technology in our fire stations. It's anticipated to provide some health, actually provide some health-related benefits to our firefighters, along with hopefully helping to improve some response times. The third project is food insecurity. So under the CARES Act program, the Board has been, we've been working with various nonprofits out in the community, and we have been funding some increased demands for their services related to the pandemic with CARES Act funds. Well, we've about fully expended the CARES Act funds. By the end of next month, those funds will be fully expended. So we are now shifting to using American Rescue Plan Act dollars to fund some contract extensions, because demand for food is still at an increased level. The third, the next project, or the fourth project, would be per septic to sewer conversion projects, $70 million. Those would be primarily in the Ruskin-Wyomama area and also in the Palm River and Gibsonton area. We have been planning, we've done some planning and design related to those, but they obviously still have some long, long lead times associated with them, so we wanted to get these in front of you as soon as possible so we can get started. I know Mr. Cassidy is ready to go as soon as this item is approved. As you know, that's a, you know, we originally had basically a 50-year plan to do all the conversions, so this will help us shorten that time period by quite a bit, or by a sum of amount. The next project is a university area sewer and water connection program. Those are for unincorporated area residents that are out there. These actually are City of Tampa water customers. Having said that, we've been studying this, we've been talking to the City of Tampa, and what we've realized is there's a lot of infrastructure out in that area. However, there are a number of properties that are not connected to that infrastructure, so we thought that a good first step in being able to improve water quality out in that area and having some environmental improvements related to second to sewer is to come up with a program, like a Phase 1 program, that tries to get those unconnected properties connected to the infrastructure out in that area. So we're going to continue to work with the City of Tampa to try to come up with a program where we can incentivize those connections. And then finally, there was, has been a recent opportunity to acquire and to renovate some apartments up in the university area. $2.835 million is what we're requesting today for that. We would use or go through Tampa Hillsborough Housing Initiative, Homeless Initiative, in order to make that happen. If you approve this item today, then there will be a, the next item on your agenda will be in agreement with THHI to be able to flow the funds through them to be able to accomplish that project. And with that, I'm available for any questions, or I have also others, Department Directors here for any specific questions related to projects.
Thank you. This is all such good news that we wanted to make sure we could hear you talk about it and make sure the public could as well. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And let me just start off to Mr. Fessler, Ms. Wise, and to the entire staff for thanking you for producing a list that, at least in my view, is such a tremendous representation of this Board's priorities. When I look at what is here, in addition to the transportation money that we're taking up under a separate, under a separate item to deal with repaving, which is going to be a tremendous investment in our repaving program, this, to me, represents exactly what I believe the public wants to see us working on. Water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Flooding and drainage relief. Food insecurity. Affordable housing. And let's not forget, the biggest investment this Board has made, certainly in my memory, in septic to sewer conversion, which we've talked about so much and which is so important. So, you know, without belaboring the point, I just want to say that every time I look at this list, I see so much that is going to be accomplished with this money. And I think that when you look at it from the prism of equity, you can really see the money being invested in communities that need it. And I think it's a tremendous step toward, particularly for Progress Village, but really for Wyomama and Ruskin and Gibsonton, which has needed desperately this infrastructure work. This is going to make a huge difference. I want to make a motion to pass it, but I know that everybody else is going to want to speak first. But I just wanted to say that I think this is a tremendous work by the staff, and really, again, a reflection of our collective values as a Board.
We, if you want, we could have that motion, and we will still have people to talk. And Commissioner Smith seconds it. And with that, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized. And with that, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you very much. And actually, I echo Commissioner Cohen's words. The staff has done a marvelous job of recognizing the issues that we would like to see our residents have addressed. And the Rescue Plan dollars is an excellent source for being able to do so. When I look at the list, it not only adds to what we received for the Gibsonton septic to sewer project, which was actually the wastewater treatment center for the $20 million that we found in September. There's an additional $75,000, I'm sorry, $75,000 that's actually allocated towards septic to sewer conversions in this area. And also a voucher system for assisting the university area residents in making the connection, because it's one thing to build it out to the house, but then there's also the cost of connecting oftentimes that we forget about. And so, I appreciate the staff's work in making sure that that is also part of this so that those families that may not necessarily have a connection budget for something like this can still participate in improving their health and safety in their communities as a consequence of investing in septic to sewer. I think there's also an important thing to recognize, too. While all of these are absolutely urgent things that need to be cared for, I think it's also for important for the Board to recognize that we have had some things that happened in the last session that impact our opportunities. And I want to make sure that we take advantage of that. Hillsborough County, through September of 2021, sent to the state in doc stamps revenues that is funds the Sodowsky Trust. And now, half of the monies go towards septic to sewer improvements as well as sea level and climate change. So, the legislature basically halved the Sodowsky Trust towards affordable housing and then split the other half between septic to sewer and sea level rise. Absolutely important causes. We have a deficit in this state and it must be addressed. But $239 million through September 15th was sent to the state by Hillsborough County taxpayers. Last year, $175 million was sent to the state for, to, in doc stamp revenue. It's split between multiple sources, but we don't get that back to spend without actually applying for the grants at the state level to cover the deficit that we know we have when it comes to septic to sewer allocation and budget resources. So, I would like to ask the staff to be very aggressive about making sure that every penny that we go to the septic to sewer trust fund that was established last year, that that money comes back to Hillsborough County because we do have such a great need. Only a portion of the housing money comes back to Hillsborough County. We are a donor county when it comes to the Sodowsky Trust and the portion that comes back to us for affordable housing. The, from my understanding, and I'll ask that our legislative team assist us in confirming this, but it's, while there is a formula that reduces the amount we get back from the monies that we send up in doc stamps from deeds and mortgage registrations, we get a very much reduced amount coming back to affordable housing. But I do not know whether or not there is a reapportionment formula for the septic to sewer or the sea level climate change trust. So, we need to find that out because if that is not reapportioned across all the counties and if we're able to prove need, we should be able to actually apply for the competitive grants for those, for those dollars to supplement what we're using American Rescue Plan dollars for. And I want to make sure that we are actually taking advantage of every opportunity to meet the needs of Hillsborough County residents. So, with that, I'm not going to make a motion, but I would like to make sure that future efforts to acquire the money that we send to Tallahassee to come back for the purposes that have been allocated towards septic to sewer conversions. And I'll stop there, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And this is, this is so exciting to be finally have this large federal funding source to be able to address our considerable backlog of infrastructure needs in this county. And I agree wholeheartedly with the way Commissioner Cohen framed this as, and the gratitude he expressed to our staff for really honing in on our Board's priorities, which, which I am very proud of us for representing our constituents' priorities here. There is, there is no fluff, there is no pork, there is no government padding of this in, or giveaways in any way. This is the meat and potatoes of our essential work that we are tasked to do, that we are delivering. And, and our staff, the administration, Ms. Wise, Mr. Fessler, and everybody working with you has done a marvelous job of focusing our first efforts, first with the repaving piece that we took, repaving our roads, which, you know, Hillsborough County has become one big pothole. And we are, but we now have a plan to address that and this, this funding we've already allocated along with the other infrastructure here. There's, there's important improvements for fire rescue, for waters, water sewer. And, you know, yes, the neediest of the neighborhoods in Gibsonton, Ruskin, and Wyomama, and also the university area. My goodness, some of our communities have been really behind the times. It's, it's embarrassing. And this will allow us to catch up with that. There's affordable housing, food insecurity. We are really going to do a lot of good here for a lot of people. And I couldn't be prouder of our, our Board working together with our administration and staff. And, and also the staff's commitment, the administration's commitment, our Board's commitment to transparency. As we spend this considerable amount of money on this process of bringing things out here to the public, exactly what we're spending things on and taking a measured approach to, okay, figuring out the buckets, the priorities, and then bringing back the list. Next meeting, we'll have the list of repaving projects. I just am very excited to be able to report back to our constituents that, that we are all working together to, to provide the infrastructure and the needs of the county with this federal funding. I agree with Commissioner Overman. We do need to hold the state's feet to the fire as much as we can in making sure we're getting our fair share from there. But we are certainly demonstrating that we are responsible and effective in the approach we're taking to using these grant dollars. So, thank you.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with all been said. I'd just like to add that with these projects, that we let the public know how the projects are being funded. And so, if we can have signage on all of the projects in the community, how APR funds are working so that the community would know with the sign that we always put up with, by the county, that these funds are being from the American Rescue Plan so they would know as well. And secondly, I know we cannot do the happy dance in the boardroom, but approving this motion will require a happy dance after we approve it. Thank you so much.
Okay, and seeing no other Commissioners, I'll, I'll just say a, you know, deep gratitude on the part of the Board. We don't usually recognize our budget departments, I don't think, for their public service. It's, you know, other departments that we recognize or the administrator, or I think our legal is left out of that as well. So, I'll, I'll add that in at this time. But I think that there has been a just amazing, transparent, and really strong effort in terms of looking at these funds. And there's, as I understand, in total, $104 million. That's a lot of money that we're talking about this morning that's going to go forward. And I know our staff has been trying to do it sooner, not later, so that we could take as much advantage as we could of, because we know there's the supply chain issues, there's labor force issues and that. So, to kind of get a move on that, but, and will, of course, be, I think, as well, helping the economy, helping people getting good jobs. But we could do that by doing a lot of different things. And I think this truly is, having been on the Board for four and a half years, I'll tell you, I think, if this was done four years ago, it would be, I just believe, a very different list. And I think the Board has taken a new direction. This is a reflection of those priorities. I know since I've been on it, and I have to say, it's, a lot of it, my focus on sewer to septic was a result of my time as an aide here with Commissioner Castor. If I hadn't quite had that history and with Commissioner Smith as an activist at the time, I, I wouldn't have been quite as attuned as I have been over my years of trying to focus on septic to sewer. And I think, but for some small projects that have been done in Palm River, that this has really been an ignored but important area that we needed to dedicate significant funds. When we first talked about this, I think before COVID, it was something like 80 years out to achieve conversion within the urban service area by our budget. And I guess if there's any silver lining, and there's not many, to COVID, this investment and this money that we have to invest in, really, this is, this is pretty transformative, although most people won't be looking at it, you know, one of the most probably unappreciated areas that you can possibly do, actually, is septic to sewer. It's not really seen, you know? And we're, we're, I was taken aback, to tell you the truth, when I talked to staff and, and was getting the numbers down. I love the numbers. And they said $70 million, $70 million. That's amazing. And also, to our staff, to note, and I think it's so far been a little bit of a not heralded issue is that we just were awarded $20 million by the state for septic to sewer conversion. That's on top of it. So, that is, that reflects, I think, our staff expressing our kind of priorities to the state. And, you know, my, my comment was, wow, because I haven't really heard about the state. Honestly, I know we are a donor county and I haven't heard about resources being donated. So, that's on top of it. And Commissioner Smith, you named Wyomama and Ruskin. And, you know, we have Palm River and we had the university area, which I was really, not only we're leveraging what's already been put there, but hasn't kind of been activated in terms of serving that area in septic to sewer by, by this investment. But we also have another investment that we've made that I think is very significant in terms of this, and that's Town and Country. And that has been coming, some of that was aided along by Congresswoman Castor's office and their investment in septic to sewer in Town and Country. So, we have lots of good news there. $35 million, $35 million in road resurfacing is an amazing investment, not, or part of the monies before. And I just think that these, these are truly a reflection of this new Board and its priorities and focus on these things that I think are leading to a better future and a more sustainable Hillsborough County. And one that is really, I could say, down there in the ditches in terms of really creating that great infrastructure that we need to, to do all the things that we want to do. We can't ignore this urban service lack of infrastructure that we've had. So, I think this is making a, a big payment to doing all that. And as well, it's just so important. And I'm pleased at the kinds of investments we've made in food security that, especially now, is so important. In broadband for, I've had people that didn't believe that we didn't have broadband in certain places in Hillsborough County, but we don't. And, and I have the meetings online to prove it. But we, this is, this is a great list and it's a reality list, not a wish list. So, that's pretty amazing. And as we move forward, I think we, as well as the staff and everyone, can be very proud of what this list has. So, thank you very much to the County Administrator, Ms. Wise. Thank you to Mr. Fessler, Mr. Brickie. You might, if there's some special thank yous that, that we've left out here, but I just, this is, this is a good moment to celebrate and I wanted to take some time to do that. So, Ms. Wise, did you have anything to say? I just wanted to give you that opportunity.
I just want to thank you. And I think we all articulated the big investment in the community. You know, it seems like the fire alerting system, for example, that's included here, too. It's going to impact every firefighter and every station. And it's been something that's been needed for a while. So, maybe not, you know, a big sexy item, but it really is going to impact public safety and the quality for our firefighters. So, so thank you for all your kind words.
And thank you for mentioning that. A lot of this list isn't a lot of glitter and sparkle or a lot, it's a lot of substance and important stuff that maybe doesn't get the attention it should. But it's an amazing list. And with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen with a second by Commissioner Smith. And seeing no further discussion and recognizing that Commissioner Hagan is not available, we'll do a roll call vote. I mean, I'm sorry, not a roll call vote, I'm sorry. We can vote on, please record our votes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
And thank you. And the companion item is item B1. And this is to allocate some of these monies to 36 units for very low-income people emerging out of homelessness in combination with Tampa Hillsborough County Homeless Initiative. And Cheryl Howell will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Affordable Housing Services. So good to be here this morning, Ms. Wise. B1, we're requesting approval of an American Rescue Plan Act Funding Agreement between Hillsborough County and Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative for the acquisition and rehabilitation of a 36-unit multifamily rental property located at 1115 East 127th Avenue, Tampa. It's known as Youngstown Apartments. And these apartments will provide housing opportunities to individuals or households emerging out of homelessness. THHI, working in conjunction with a subrecipient partner, will acquire and rehabilitate the property and provide wraparound services to households at or below 50% of area median income that are urgent from homelessness. A land use restriction agreement, mortgage, and promissory note will ensure that the units will be used as affordable rental housing for a minimum of 30 years. This agreement will be funded with $2,835,000 from the FY22 American Rescue Plan Act adopted budget. Thank you so much.
Move, approval.
Thank you. And...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman and seconded by Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to thank the staff and Ms. Howell for being as creative and, and resourceful as possible. Finding, finding this unit was not an easy task. You know, when you're scanning all throughout the county and with property values where they are now, finding this is a way of really capitalizing on an opportunity to provide 36 units of multifamily for the amount... 36 units of multifamily for the amount that's allocated towards this project is an excellent example of, you know, getting your hands dirty, making it happen, and figuring out the best way to make the numbers work. So I just want to thank the staff and Ms. Howell for their resourcefulness and creativity in order to be able to accomplish this, because as we heard earlier today, there is a crisis in our community. And having people have a place to lay their head is critically important to the success of our community. And thank you very much for every event.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. Did staff hear that we're having some trouble recording our votes? Maybe we could try it one more time? It's rusty.
Mine is not registering at all.
Did we get that?
No.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is the 10 o'clock public hearing. This is to--
I think the staff has a little video to show their happy dance, don't they?
This is to hold a public hearing to discuss initiating a new Phase IV of the Community Investment Tax and Making Roadway Pavement Preservation Program as a project to be eligible for funding of this new phase. And Kevin Brickie will take us through the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget. D1 is indeed a, to hold a public hearing to receive public input and comments regarding initiating the new Phase IV, the Community Investment Tax, and the approval of the Roadway Pavement Preservation Program as a project eligible for this new phase, and to adopt the related CIT Phase IV resolution, which will indeed initiate that Phase IV and indeed make the Roadway Pavement Preservation Program eligible for funding in that Phase IV. With that, this is a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is there anyone? Okay. And we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner Overman moved approval. Is there a second? Commissioner Smith, seconded. And at this time, I don't see any discussion by Commissioners. So please, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, Commissioner Smith second to approve. Please record your vote.
Mine is still on B1.
B as in boy?
Yeah, I can't do that.
Maybe we should just do a roll call vote.
It should be D as in dog.
Easier, and then we'll figure this out later. I thought it would be so hard to figure out before. Okay. So with that, let's do a roll call vote.
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, Ms. Wise.
That's all the items?
I wanted you to be able to say that.
10:35? It really is a happy dance?
This is definitely a happy dance.
Double happy dances.
Yes. So all you have left are future discussion items.
Okay. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been hearing of a lot of concerns from county employees about the COVID testing. I know a lot of them have been sent home, and they're either being asked to use PTO, or I'm not even sure what the case is, if they don't have any PTO remaining. But, you know, we're in a good place, I think, right now with COVID. And, you know, I don't know if another variant's going to rear its ugly head, but, you know, I'd certainly like to see some of these practices begin to wind down. I just don't, anecdotally, I just don't see a lot of that going on in the private sector anymore. And, you know, to the extent that you do, you know, see some companies or agencies continuing to, you know, sort of wield a heavy hammer with this, you know, you're starting to see some real problems with the labor supply. So, you know, I just want to be on record as saying that, you know, I can empathize with what we're hearing from some of these employees. And, you know, my two cents worth is, you know, that I'd like to see us begin to wrap some of this up. I know that's the county administrator's call. You know, I fully understand the county charter and understand how that works, but just want to be on record as saying that, you know, I'm ready to start to put a lot of these things in the rearview mirror, including the mask use here in the Board of County Commissioners chambers. You know, I think it's long past due, and I see other governing bodies that are conducting their meetings maskless. And, you know, it's just, you know, time to set the tone, I think, and, you know, just allow the people to see that we as a board are ready to move forward and begin to return to a sense of normalcy. Ms. Wise, you may want to look at the data for, you know, another week or two and make those decisions. I don't know how my six colleagues feel, but, you know, I just want to be on record as stating that that's where I think we should head. I think that's the direction we should move in.
Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And I'd just like to, and I understand that everybody's tired of all of this, but when you're doing something that's working and actually reducing the incidence of people that are becoming ill, especially in light of the fact that we've lost a firefighter this week to COVID, I think we're not done with this. And I think sending the message that we should stop doing what's working is a dangerous precedent. We found that back in May, when the CDC relaxed the recommendations, we found ourselves with a significant spike, the highest one we've ever seen in July. It takes time for behaviors to change and for a virus to wane in the community spread. So while I do appreciate the desire to kind of go back to normal, trust me, I would love to see that. We're not there yet, in my opinion. We are just now, as of yesterday, having the opportunity to have children between the ages of five and 11 become vaccinated. And those children would really like to spend time with their families during the holidays. So while I appreciate it, I truly do, the desire to stop putting people in difficult choices, but at the end of the day, loving thy neighbor is the rule of thumb that I live by, and using protective measures to keep our communities and our employees and our colleagues and families safe, I think, is the best course of action. And I thank you, Commissioner White, for bringing it up. I do think we need to stay on point.
Commissioner White?
Well, I think I was pretty clear in my initial statement. You know, not everyone is aware of or perhaps understands the county charter with separation of powers. There's probably very little that certainly an individual board member can do. I think I was clear in my preliminary statement, but for those employees that do look to the board on these matters, I just want to state clearly for the record that I empathize with that feeling. I think it's wrong that we're continuing to require our employees to submit to this testing and to face ramifications if they don't submit. I'd love to see some hard data collected on what major private sector employers are doing throughout our community. I think you would find that very few of them are requiring this sort of action on the part of their employees to submit to this. You know, we're headed in the right direction. I think this pandemic is very close to being behind us. I'm already reading reports in the mainstream media that indicate that we're very close, we're on the cusp of this becoming an endemic disease issue, no longer a pandemic. So for all it's worth, whether I can do anything about it or not, I just want to state for the record that I empathize with the employees that are stating this. I don't agree with it. I wish it weren't happening, but, you know, I guess it is what it is. You know, if the board's not going to weigh in and it's not going to be changed on the part of the administration.
I don't see any other further comments, but I guess for the record, I'd just like to say that I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner White, but I also think that it's been a tough job for the county administrator and the county staff as they face this. And I think they've dealt with it with a lot of good work, a lot of intelligence and data and care for the community and for the employees and staff and everyone in this building and in the community at large. And so I think that that has been a tough, a tough job to take. And I really want to express my support for that. Also, I think that the, I don't think the community at large recognized the mountain that we climbed. And, I mean, it was not even just a spike. That was three times, or at least two and a half times higher than it had been in March in the greatest period. In the state of Florida, we had the greatest number of deaths, the greatest number of hospitalizations, the greatest numbers of spread that we've ever had, and that was just not just months ago. And I think it has kind of, at this point, hugely burned through the community, and people ended up getting COVID, the Delta variant, getting vaccinated, getting the Delta variant. Some people ended up dying. We've got, now we have a lot of orphans in the state of Florida from this. We have, you know, a lot of deaths that occurred and deaths here in Hillsborough County as well, and a lot of people left in not great shape, but it has finally gone down. I was watching for 18 months now for it to go below 5% positivity rate, and it's finally gone down below that. And I do think it, I think it is probably endemic or approaching. I haven't heard that pronounced as such. But I also was waiting very, very much for the, at least vaccinations for five- to 11-year-olds and looking at that, which I guess we have coming soon. So, you know, I think it's, we can talk about it, and of course, and I think things have, they did lighten up before. Before we had this serious, serious mountain of COVID back in a few months ago, you know, we were starting, I think we spent a few meetings at least where we had the masks off, and we took down some of the plexiglass, and we started opening up. And, you know, we did it cautiously and carefully, and then we had this tremendous spike, not spike, I don't even like to call it a spike, because it was really just the pounding of COVID infections in Hillsborough County and the state as well. And I'll tell you, one of the things for me that made it difficult was that we weren't getting information from the state of Florida about how bad the infection was. And so it was disconcerting to make decisions in the dark without the knowledge. But I guess we're getting a little more information now. Certainly, as much as it went up, it has really gone down to what a level that I'm feeling much more comfortable with opening up. But, you know, I trust our staff to deal with this well, and I think we've, I think there's been protection for a lot of people and measures, and also a demonstration by this board, kind of of a carefulness that I think was well exercised and expressed. So with that, I know that the staff, and I won't speak for you, Ms. Wise, but I know that there's, that you're carefully looking at all this and have been like all along in a very careful way. And I don't know if you want to respond, you do at this time.
Sure. And we don't really have to get into it very much. I just want you all to know, and I've shared this with you too, and for the employees as well, I take these decisions, I make them very carefully, and I do it based on a lot of information and a lot of data and thoughtfulness. And it is to protect the employees, their families, and the public. And it is true, the cases have been declining. And we have a committee of employees that include human resources, facilities, risk management, the county attorney's office, and others who provide me with information, especially with the Department of Health as a partner. So we have gotten to this point, we are not going to be masking forever. We all want to get rid of this, we all want to be safe, and we are getting to the point where we can make some new decisions, and we are thoughtfully going through that. So I want you to know that all your input is meaningful, but I do take these, this responsibility, you know, it's very strong. And I want to thank our staff and everybody who's working through this. And we are getting to the point, we look at, like I said, data-driven, the cases in the community, the cases of our staff, the vaccination rates, the antibodies that are out there, all that drives that decision-making. So I thank you for your input.
Okay. And with that, I see no further future discussion. I think that was a discussion worth having. And with that, we'll adjourn.